Okay, welcome to the zoning board of appeals. Tonight, we do have an executive session first, and we're going to go into that mode. There is a room down the hall that we've saved for you guys with air conditioning. So you didn't have to sit outside on the steps. There's only two chairs in the hall. But down, if you go down the end of the hall on the right, there's a nice, comfortable room for you all. So anyway, the board will be entering into executive session under GL 30821A3 to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in the matter of West Falmouth Estates LLC, 19 North Falmouth Highway, North Falmouth, 85 Brookhill Road LLC, 85 Brookhill Road, and Sullivan, Zero Melrose Avenue, Falmouth, where discussion in open session would have a detrimental impact on the town's litigation position. And I have a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chairman, with a friendly amendment that we will come back into regular session at the conclusion of our executive session.
Second? Annis, we have a motion and a second, and then we'll do a roll. Fineran?
Aye.
Peterson, aye.
Murphy, aye.
Morse, aye.
Petrucci, aye.
Haney, aye.
And then we will come back in. So if you would mind going into the cozy room. Regular hearing. Welcome to the zoning board of appeals. Please silence all cell phones and note that this meeting is being taped by FCTV. I'll introduce the board and the staff. On my far right, we have Mark Fineran, a voting member, and then Scott Peterson, a voting member. To my right is Frank Duffy, our clerk. My name is Susie Murphy, the chair. To my left is James Morse, vice chair. To his left is Tony Petrucci, associate. And then we have Nick Haney, another associate. And we have Ashley DeMello, our office assistant. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town zoning bylaws in reviewing and voting on every application that comes before us. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public and to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to closing the hearing process and reaching a decision. One, to begin any sharing, the clerk will read public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. Two, the applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation, but time may be extended by vote of the board. Three, the board will then question the applicant. Four, the public will be invited to comment. Comment should be limited to two minutes and be strictly related to the proposal. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair and should come to the podium. State your name and address for the record, speak into the mic, and it will not amplify your voice and record audio for the FCTV viewers. And we also have a quick time before we start if anyone wants to make a public comment on anything that's not on our agenda. Anybody? So we'll start off.
Madam, may I make a motion about tonight's agenda? I move that we take case 06224 Sullivan, Zero Melrose Avenue in Falmouth out of order and here at first, given the fact that we have a number of people present who have a distance to go to get home after this hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second, ma'am.
Do you have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we have Tony voting on this.
And Madam Chairman, just for the record, the majority of the cases tonight indicate, actually, none of the cases indicate that I would be a voting member. Looking at the dates and going through my notes, if you recall, approximately a month ago, I pinched my sciatic nerve and was not able to walk. Since all of these has been continued, I'm going to be stepping off since I will not be a voting member on any of these this evening.
Great, thank you. All right, we have nothing from the clerk on this, right?
We already opened the case, and we heard testimony, so we just continued it till tonight, so.
So Attorney Clower is at the plate.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Kevin Clower, attorney here in Falmouth, and I am before you representing Larry and Valerie Sullivan. If I can ask a quick point of clarification, I can't help but notice that Ms. Stockman is not here tonight. Last time, we did not proceed with any decisions because of her absence. What is the board's intention tonight, just so I can have adequate expectations?
We might decide, we can decide if we so choose.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
That would be the goal.
I don't know, I can't predict the future.
Just trying, because last time, we basically said, you know, we're continuing everything tonight.
No, no.
Okay.
There is a chance.
Okay, great.
We're voting on all those other ones that we continued over.
Yeah.
Great, just trying to understand so we know where we're going. As I mentioned, I'm here before you representing Larry and Valerie Sullivan, who are seeking permission to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming structure at Zero Melrose Avenue in the R.C. zoning district. We presented to this board on June 6th on a remanded application, reviewing the new site plan and architectural plans. Review that, I'd like to review that briefly since it's been six weeks, and I'd also like to address the correspondence that's been submitted since the last meeting. So as you know, this is presently a detached two-car garage, which conforms to setback and lot coverage requirements, but the use itself is nonconforming, being an accessory dwelling without a primary, accessory use, rather, without a primary. They're proposing to raise the existing garage and to replace it with a modest, single-family residence, which will include a single-car garage on the first floor and a single-bedroom home on the second floor. The footprint of this proposed structure is 756 square feet, which is 20.37% lot coverage. Proposed ridge height is 23 feet 11 inches. This application requires a special permit pursuant to 240 10.2A1, 240 11.3A4 to alter the existing nonconforming use to a conforming use, a single-family dwelling, which is allowed by right within the residential C zoning district. This proposed dwelling will conform to all setback and locker requirements. So you, as the board, asked to determine whether or not this change, the nonconforming use to a conforming one, one allowed by right, is substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use. 240 10.2A1 allows for alteration and changes to pre-existing nonconforming structures and uses by special permit. And again, provided that change is not substantially more detrimental. We have previously reviewed and set forth in correspondence why the existing garage is a legally nonconforming structure, a legally nonconforming structure, though it is a nonconforming use. So under Massachusetts general law, Chapter 48, Section 7, nonconforming structures, even if in violation of zoning laws at the time of their establishment, are deemed to be lawful pre-existing nonconforming structures if no enforcement is taken within 10 years, and therefore eligible to make changes and alterations pursuant to 48, Section 6, and the local ordinances and bylaws. Our bylaw itself was changed at the November town meeting to reflect this. 240 3A1 specifically states that structures that qualify as lawful pre-existing nonconforming structures under general law, Chapter 48, Section 7, are considered nonconforming structures entitled to treatment as such as provided in the section. This amendment to Chapter 48, Section 7, and our bylaw make it clear that since this structure is well over 10 years old, it is considered legally nonconforming and eligible to seek relief pursuant to Section 6 and a special permit pursuant to 240 10.2A1. So I want to be clear, generally, when this board hears requests for changes to nonconforming uses, it's a request to change to an alternative, though perhaps less detrimental, nonconforming use. We've seen this a lot with conversions of motels to condominiums. That's not what's being requested. The applicants are proposing to eliminate an existing nonconforming use and to instead have a byright conforming use. Given that the residential C zoning district allows for single-family residences by right, it's difficult to see how that change would be substantially more detrimental than the present nonconforming use. It's been alleged that the residential use has been abandoned, and that's included citations to cases such as Shiaraluce versus Zoning Board of Wareham and Dial-Away Company versus the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. Those cases, however, pertain to the abandonment of structures where nonconforming structures have been removed and years later have sought to be replaced. This is easily distinguished because, in this case, the structure is still there. It has not been removed, and the nonconforming use is still, in fact, in effect. We're proposing a byright use. Our bylaw was also changed to add language regarding the abandonment of nonconforming uses, not conforming uses, nonconforming uses, where, again, the proposal is to modify an existing nonconforming use to a byright conforming use. It's been asserted that the lot is insufficient for the proposed use, but these are lots that are laid out in 1800s. Lots and lots of this size and smaller are incredibly common in this area, and this house is built on many of those lots. Those are certainly suitable for use of single-family dwellings. This is no different. In fact, this proposal is more conforming to the bylaw than those existing structures and would by no means be out of character. Submitted correspondence showing that within a few hundred feet, there are at least 25 homes on lots of 3,900 square feet or less. Of those 25 homes, the average lot coverage by structure is 42.53%. We're proposing 20.37%. This is entirely in character with other properties in terms of lot size and in terms of the size and style of the dwelling. So 240 10.2A requires a finding that the change is not substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use of structure. Again, beating a dead horse here, we're changing an existing nonconforming use to a conforming one, a single-family dwelling which is allowed by right. Proposed structure will conform to all setback and lock coverage requirements. Does not create any new dimensional nonconformities, doesn't impair public use and vistas, and does reasonably conform to the neighborhood. It also meets all the standards set forth under 240 12.1E. Lot is adequate in terms of the size of the proposed use. As noted, is at least 25 lots within just a few hundred square feet, similar or smaller than the subject property, used for the same use as the subject property. This project will meet all setback and lock door requirements. The site is suitable for the proposed use. The applicant's proposing a single-family residence in a zone that allows it, is a byright matter. Proposal is compliant with lot coverage and setback requirements. Is no impact on traffic flow and safety. The addition of a one-bedroom home in a densely developed area that provides for three onsite parking spaces where only two is required will not have any impact on traffic flow or safety. The neighborhood visual carriage will be largely unaffected. This is an area that's dense with existing dwellings, which vary greatly in architectural style. It's an aesthetic improvement over the existing garage. Is adequate method of sewage disposal, water and drainage. Entirely conforming system served by municipal water and the drainage will be improved significantly with the addition of a berm on the street and the dry wells on the site. There are adequate utilities and other public services that will be unaffected by the proposal. Public utilities are already in this area. It was a concern expressed in one of the abutters' letters regarding the potential rental of this property. There's no intent by the owner to rent this property. It's going to be used for family. However, we didn't be willing to include a provision restricting rentals to no less than six months. There was no intent to rent this property. I know I'm repeating myself, but this is pretty straightforward. This is the elimination of a nonconforming use of an unsightly-aged garage with a byright use and a functional, attractive dwelling. The applicants made significant efforts to listen to the abutter and board comments, made substantial changes to the plan, reducing the scope of the project, the size of the building, and it's a design that's much more in character to the neighborhood. This will not create any new dimensional nonconformities. Eliminated nonconforming use is entirely in character to the neighborhood. For all these reasons, I believe this meets the requirements of 240 10.2A1, 240 11.3A4, and 240 12.1E. So I know there was a lot of recap over what we went over at the last hearing, but I also wanted to talk about what was in the correspondence. A lot of those points were raised in the letter that I submitted about a week ago, and I would be happy to address any questions that the board may have at this time.
Anybody have any questions?
I really don't have any questions, per se. I mean, we've already kind of been through all of this. I mean, my position hasn't changed, and, you know, it's commonplace for counsel to rely on some kind of case law to bolster their argument. And I think the case law that was presented to us is, to be honest with you, quite thin gruel. I mean, with Shiaralucci and Dial-Away, as far as the abandon goes, they were obviously abandoned. We all know that. I mean, we permit structures that should have been torn down years ago, but the people keep them up because they don't want to lose their pre-existing nonconformity. This thing was never torn down. I think that at least 30% of the lots in Falmouth Heights are this size. One of the neighbors complained that all they have is 50 feet of road frontage when 100 is required. I would be surprised if 20% of the lots in Falmouth Heights meet the required frontage. This yard meets all the setbacks, and it's only 20.37% lot coverage. I mean, that's, I mean, Kevin described it earlier as a unicorn. I mean, you're not going to find 5% of the lots in Falmouth Heights that can do that. And another argument is, from the other counsel, was that 7,500 square feet is required to build a house. Well, now, 7,500 square feet will get you two houses. And I think this structure qualifies as nothing better than an accessory dwelling anyhow. And also, take an empty lot anywhere in America that's been empty for some time, wherever. Better than 50% of all the abutters are always going to be against somebody doing anything with that lot, and I think that's a pretty, pretty fair statement. I just, I look at this as a substantial improvement, and I think it absolutely should be allowed. And if we don't, I would bet everything that the applicant will prevail in court.
Scott?
Well, thank you. Again, to Mark's point, I do like the conforming aspect of all the setbacks. That's important. I do like that the applicant is willing to add a condition for no rentals less than six months. I think that that, you know, hopefully appeases some of the abutters. We do have town council's representative here, and I would like to hear his thoughts also after Attorney, we hear from Attorney Kirk, who also brought up some very salient points, but right now, from my perspective, I, again, I would probably agree with Mark's comments. I don't believe that this is more detrimental. I like that it's keeping on the same footprint. It really is conforming when the vast majority of homes in that area are nonconforming, so I guess that's it. But I would like to hear from counsel at some point.
Frank, do you have anything?
Yeah, briefly, I'd like to acknowledge that we, in the last couple of weeks, we've gotten some very interesting and comprehensive letters from Attorney Clower and, again, from Attorney Kirk outlining their positions. And I really, personally, I appreciate their effort to present the issues that way. It sometimes comes off a lot better when you can sit down and read it than you get at the oral presentation. So I want to appreciate, tell you that I appreciate your effort. I find that this particular situation, we were getting kind of tied up in knots the last time we were here over the fact that this is a very small lot and it was created in 1873. Now, in the meantime, there had been zoning, zoning was adopted, and there's been a lot of minimum requirements put on lots that are created at that time afterwards. But in general, this is just a general statement, a lot that is buildable at one time remains buildable unless it's specifically not buildable. And I've always looked at these minimum requirements of 3,000 feet or 5,000 feet or whatever as applying to empty lots that are not built upon. But a lot that is built upon and there's a lawful, nonconforming structure on it, I believe there, you're allowed to come in under the provisions of the zoning bylaw and replace it with a conforming building. So that's my view of the situation. But I, again, want to thank both counsel for really helping us out with this.
Thank you. Tony?
Thank you. So in this particular case, Massachusetts, Chapter 48, Section 6 really doesn't pertain. What we're considering here basically is whether or not this is substantially more detrimental or not detrimental to the community.
So I think Section 6 does pertain. I think you might be referring to the area that talks about 5,000 square feet.
Yes.
But that would be for if this was a not-built-upon lot. Right now, we have an existing lot that is built upon. That's the differentiator there. So the first section of Chapter 48, Section 6, talks about lots, and then we're talking about nonconforming structures and uses, which is sort of the next section in Chapter 48, Section 6. In this case, we have a lot that has been utilized and built upon. So I don't think that that first section is relevant because that's talking just about a lot that is really unbuilt or untouched at that point. So this section, it talks about changes to nonconforming structures and uses, which can be allowed provided not substantially more detrimental.
Thank you. So we have an average lot coverage by structure in the community in that neighborhood of 30.51% versus the proposal of 20.37%, substantially less.
Mm-hmm.
We're far below the ridge height that's allowed under the bylaw. We're at 23 feet 11 inches. All the setbacks, as been mentioned before, have been met and exceeded. They're 12 foot 1, 12 foot 9, and they're greater than 10 feet on the sidelines in the front. So I guess that I have to, as one member, look at this, whether or not it is substantially more detrimental or it's not detrimental. The fact that it is, has less coverage than the average home plays a big part in my mind. The fact that it meets all the setbacks that we require today plays a big part in my mind. So why would this be substantially more detrimental? Lot owner occupied. We talked about rent, and you're offering up that it will be rented, if it were to be rented, it would be not less than six months. And the rental part, what concerns me is that you're sitting on the top of the hill there. You're sitting above the abutter behind. I don't think that abutters come to one of these meetings. I'm unaware of that.
Jim Fox was here as representative of the Arnsteins.
So... Who doesn't live there?
Who doesn't live there.
Correct.
So that is, in my mind, detrimental to that abutter. The fact that you have a deck on the second floor which is at elevation 10 feet higher than the grade, or at least the bottom, the top of the foundation, looking into that. I think that if you could take that deck, which now has an open railing, and enclose it, as we had done on other cases, the able-to-look backyard, so that you don't have a party going on, especially if it's rented, or it could be anybody, and we're not creating a nuisance to the people that sit well below. So that's part of my concern with it being more detrimental. Other than that...
If I can just clarify, are you saying, right now, I think we're showing sort of wire or railing?
Yes.
If that was a solid panel?
Speaking as one member, in my mind, I'm sitting, if I'm the abutter down below, and I'm looking up at that, 10 feet above the foundation, and I'm down even lower than that, yeah, I've got a problem with that. And I think that's detrimental. That creates a detrimental effect that did not exist and does not exist with the garage. If you were to take and use the same type of siding, for instance, I'm not saying it has to be, and you enclose that at railing height, as we did in another case, if you recall, with a garage that was being used as an apartment, that would make me certainly look at this a lot better. But I think all in all, I think it's a substantially better, much bigger improvement.
If I can, if I may, for a second, the concern that was expressed from nepticular abutter was not relative to the deck. It was about drainage, which we're trying to address via the berm in the front and drywells. If that was to be the difference between this being approved and not approved, I can...
I'm only speaking as one member.
But I know that they would be amenable to that. My recollection of that particular property is that the yard is actually really situated in the front of that property.
I didn't hear you, what?
My recollection of that property on the backside, on Vernon, is that the house is situated very far back on the lot. And really, what the front, the house, the yard, rather, is in the front of that property. So to the extent that there would be any overhang of the deck, it's looking at, really, the roof of the other house, because that backs up pretty far to the property line.
Well, I see the deck 10 feet above the foundation as detrimental to, if you don't have that situation now, you're creating a situation. I think that you can eliminate that, speaking as one member, by enclosing that deck, as we did with another case. I mean, other than, and if, in fact, the board decides that it could be rented or accepts that terms of not renting for less than six months, that eliminates a lot of my concerns as one member. So I think all in all, it's substantially proven.
Do you have anything?
The applicant, they bought this property, right, there?
The applicant actually has a house kind of around the corner from this.
That's not connected to this lot?
No, because there, if there was, there would have been a merger at some point. This property's never been owned in connection with any of the directly abutting laws.
Okay.
I have a quick question for you.
Of course.
The nonconforming use of the structure that you're using, and you feel it flows over to use?
Well, I mean, it is, you know, it's nonconforming in the sense that it's accessory to nothing. It's accessory without a primary. Generally speaking, you have to have a primary use on the lot in order for there to be an accessory use to it. So in this case, we have an accessory without a primary on the same lot. So that is, I believe, a nonconforming use as it stands today. What we're proposing is an entirely conforming use that's allowed by right within the residential C zoning district.
But you feel the nonconformity gives it protection?
Well, the fact is, a structure there gives it protection. It's been used. I mean, there is, there is a structure. It's been built upon. It's been taxed separately. But right now, we have a structure with a nonconforming use, and we're proposing a conforming one.
This is where I have a hard time. We're going to get another one that's going to come in with their doghouse and say, hey, it's a structure!
That's, whatever, we'd have to deal with that when it comes, but...
Yeah, we'll deal with it when it comes.
Madam Chair, can I?
Go ahead.
Since our last hearing, there's been, where there was a submission from the building commissioner, and I don't know if everybody saw it, but this is to inform the zoning board of appeals, here and after referred to as the board, that the referral with the map attached from the building department regarding the above referenced property, which is before the board at this time, was to show the board that said property was created long before zoning existed and is therefore protected. However, I believe that any lot less than 5,000 square feet in size is required to apply to the board or any increase or change to the structure on the site.
So, I mean, he's well within his rights to do this, and, you know, in, as far as Tony's concerned, this, I think, this guy meets all the setbacks. I mean, for us to go adding that onto a...
He's talking privacy.
Yeah, but, I mean, for us to add that on to something that's conforming. But we're adding it on to something that's conforming.
We've done this in the past.
Every...
We have.
I...
He just doesn't want the wires. He wants it covered up.
I will say, that property was nonconforming to the rear yard setback, though.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yeah.
This is not sitting well with the community there, and I understand that. We have to deal with bylaws, all right? And that's the only thing we can deal with. What I'm trying to do, if this board should vote approval here, is to make it, if it should be approved, a little more palatable for at least the abutters in the rear. I don't know what everybody else is going to feel about it on the other side of it, but the fact is, this second-floor deck sits very high. And I don't think it's a burden, knowing how construction works, for them to enclose that. In fact, it'll make it a better situation for them if they're sitting on it with privacy. So I don't see it as an issue.
Mr. Petrucci, I just spoke with Klein. He's more than agreeable to enclosing that as a solid piece.
Thank you. And the, the offer to no rental will be less than six months, I think that's important. Again, these things can become... Again, these things can become nuisances. They can become obnoxious. This is, so when you talk about setbacks being met, I think that's a wonderful thing, obviously, that is being met. We're talking about this tiny, little lot. So everything is more exaggerated. It's going to be exaggerated to the folks on the street side. It's exaggerated to the people left and right. It's not the same as if you had a 40,000 square foot lot, which is, which is required in this district right now. So I think things like that, and they're offering it, I think we need to, I wouldn't, we need to give them some privacy.
And it's true, we're dealing with a rental use, possibly. So we do have to be careful about that.
There is no intent to rent this. I wouldn't want a condition that there never be rented, because circumstances change. However, I'm happy to agree to a condition that prohibits any type of short-term rental. So I think by agreeing to no less than six months, that, that would prohibit the potential use of this as a short-term rental, but provide the client with flexibility moving forward, because circumstances do change. But he's not planning to rent this.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I just, they said, this is conforming. I mean, what if the lot was 40,000 square feet and long and narrow? Would be the same application, but I'm just, I'm just... What about if he's got his grandchildren down there? They won't be able to see the water. They won't be able to see the view. I, I think it's, we're asking for too much of a restriction, and I think it's going to come back and bite us, because people are going to request these things more, and they're going to want to design their neighbor's house. And I don't, I don't find that proper in America.
Madam Chair, may I address that?
Go ahead.
We have a right, as a board, to put conditions in.
I understand.
We have a community that has expressed a lot of concern about this. As a board, we are part of this community. I'm just trying to find a way that helps some folks at least, if this board should approve this. There may be a lot of people not happy about this. All right? I'm just trying to find ways, again, that satisfy me as one board member, because I see problems. And yes, this is America. America, yeah, I said that. America. But this board has a right to put conditions in, and we do that all the time.
More than, we're more than happy to agree to that condition, so...
I'm just having a discussion with him.
Yeah.
But I don't like when mom and dad fight.
That's all right. We do it all the time.
Dad never wins.
Yeah, dad never wins.
Yeah, that's the way I look at it. It's a give-get, and they want to give it, so let's take it. I think it's a good outcome. Want to enclose the deck to that point? That's...
Does anybody have any further questions for Attorney Clark before we go to attorney? Everybody's all set up here? Good? Attorney Kirk, would you like to come up to the plate?
Oh, sure.
Take a swing at it?
Yeah, all right.
We'll get one more attorney after that.
The trifecta.
Yeah.
Meeting Madam Chairman and members of the board. Edward Kirk, or Mr. Healy, Mr. Kent, and Mr. Harmison. I have two categories that I'd like to talk about.
You're going to have to speak up, please. Thank you.
I have two categories that I'd like to talk about. One is the bylaw and the ins and outs of structures and uses and lot sizes. And the other aspect is the proposal itself. The existing structure there is a garage. It's 16 feet at its highest point. No noise, no impact at all, at all, on the neighborhood. And certainly not a detrimental, detrimental impact on the neighborhood. It may be a little shabby in its condition, but that's not a good basis on which to approve this project. The first floor consists of a garage, or it shows a garage, and a storage area. And it also has a bathroom. And you have two doors leading into the storage area. Now, I think it's sort of unusual, at least in my experience, where your garage has its own bathroom. It sort of leads you in the direction that the storage area and the garage area may end up being used for something else. And what you're going to have essentially is potentially two units in, within this proposed structure, because the second floor also has its own bathroom. Kitchen, living room, and a bedroom. And the second floor has a separate entrance, which leads up from outside the structure to the balcony that's been talked about. The question of rental, I think, is, is pretty hard to avoid. This doesn't really set up much like your traditional single-family residence. So, you know, a six-months limitation, that's basically, you can rent from May to October, be rented probably for the, for the entire summer. You don't know, making, you know, a minimum of six months doesn't necessarily cure the problem of what would happen if this does become a summer rental with, say, more than one family living there. Now, I understand that there's not a kitchen. There's only one kitchen. But the way rentals can go, college kids and so forth, they get by without a kitchen, as long as they have a roof over their heads. So there's, there's been no shadowing here, no presentation of a shadowing in terms of how this new elevated structure at nine feet higher than what's there now is going to impact on the neighbor. And it, Mr. Healy was here last time, and he did explain how, from the balcony, it's going to have a direct view right into his yard. And that certainly would be detrimental to him. So it's one thing to make a statement that there'll be no, that it won't be substantially detrimental, but there has to be proof, and the burden of proof for an applicant, for a special permit is on, is on, is on the applicant. And you've got to get by with more than just representations. Now, with respect to the zoning aspect, what the applicant is trying to do is bootstrap some facts and put them together for a, to try to get across the goal line. This structure is not a nonconforming structure. It complies at this time with the dimensional requirements of the town zoning bylaw. There's no violation of sideline, no violation of setback, no violation of yard. It sits there in perfect compliance. There's no nonconformity. And the fact that it's been there for more than 10 years, therefore, doesn't matter. It's, it's not a structure which is entitled to the benefit of a, quote, "nonconforming" structure. And you can't make it a nonconforming structure by trying to bring in a use. And what is the use of this structure? It's a garage. That is not a nonconforming use. That is, that is, it has never been, a principal use such as garage on this lot has never been a conforming use, a lawful use, which was then rendered nonconforming. It's basically been noncompliant and nonlegal right from the get-go. There's no conformity, there's no lawful nonconformity that attaches to it, that gives it a leg up on this, on this process, either as an, and not as an accessory use either, because it's never been accessory to another structure on the same lot. So what you have is a lawfully conforming structure that's been put to a use which is unlawful for many, many years. That does not qualify as a nonconforming structure which can be extended or altered. So that's, that's one point I want to make, that it is not a nonconforming structure. And the use is not a lawful nonconforming. What it is, is a, a structure that complies with everything, but is, is noncompliant with, in terms of dimensional. It's compliant with the town's bylaw, but its use is not, and never has been, lawful. If you want to build a single-family residence today in the town of Falmouth, the minimum area requirement is 7,500 square feet. You basically have to look at this, this lot as if perhaps there's, there's never been anything there other than the fact that, the fact that the structure has been there is, supports our argument that the potential use of it as a, as a residential purpose has been abandoned. There was never any intent to use this as a residence. It was set aside by the owners years ago. This is going to be where our garage is. And I think, you know, Kevin's done a masterful job trying to bootstrap this thing to a point where he can say, oh, it's a nonconforming structure and a nonconforming use, and we're going to make it now compliant. Those, those, those steps don't add up. And it would not be, and it would be a detriment, frankly, based on the potential impact of a residence, of this kind of residence, that it would be a detrimental, have a detrimental impact on the neighborhood. Just keep in mind, the, the classic tradition of a nonconforming use is one that was once lawful. Bylaw changes. The use, which was once lawful, is no longer allowed. But there's a, there's protection there for what's already, what was once lawful and now is nonconforming. And there are certain rights that spin off from that, including these, these provisions, which will allow the expansion or alteration of a nonconforming structure. And also with respect to use. So this, this particular situation is unusual, because most people don't go out and acquire property and just put up a garage. But that's what was done here. The garage was put up, I think, in 1957. And that's what it's been used for. And the, it is, the lot, the key here is the lot, the size of the lot. 3,700 square feet. And rights can be lost. I mean, it may seem inequitable, because there are so many other houses in the Heights that are built on small lots. And that's a fact. You can't deny it. But they didn't sleep on their rights. Those people went ahead and built when they could, and therefore, they have what they have. Whoever owned this property way back when decided, we're not going to build a house here. They could have, but they didn't. And that's the situation that you're faced with today. And so from a legal point of view, both with respect to abandonment and the, the fact that it's not a nonconforming structure and it's not a nonconforming use, believe that the, the board should deny the permit. I understand, I hear where the sentiment may or may not be going. But I think that would be not in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw, primary purpose of which is conformed to the bylaw as written, avoid overcrowding, and conform to, to the requirements. This one, this one does not. Just want to make sure...
Can I ask you a question?
I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Tony, go ahead.
Thank you. If, if the applicant came to this board and, or to the building department, the building department's saying, look, it's not 5,000 square feet, so you've got to go to the board. You're going to get a special permit. Am I correct?
Yes, and that's, I, I, that's the first I was aware that the building inspector had weighed in. But I noticed if, and I haven't seen his letter, but if he's talking about 5,000 square feet, you don't have here.
Do you want it right here?
If, if the applicant walked in, if the applicant walked in the building department, theoretically, you wouldn't get a building permit. The building commission would say, you've got to go get a special permit. My, so my question is, if the applicant took the garage structure as is, didn't change any of the dimensions in the structure, but put a bedroom in, a bathroom, and a kitchen, could the applicant then do that, not changing anything but making, you know, new siding, new insulation, things like that? Could the applicant then do that? Without changing, you know, height or...
Yeah. You know, I hate to be one of those guys that says, that's a good question.
It is a good question.
But it is a good, good question. Now, I think it's possible. Yeah, I don't want to, I wouldn't want to commit to that, but the, the structure wouldn't be expanded, and they would be going to a use which is conforming. The only reason I hesitate is because for residential structures, it's not, it wouldn't be a new structure, it would be a new residence. So I think if, if, by being a new residence, it should be at least... According to the building commission, maybe 5,000.
Well, that's, that's the point I'm trying to make, is that the building inspector wouldn't give a, by right, a building permit. Building commission is saying, I've got to have 5,000 square feet before I can do that. In this town, the minimum lot size is 7,500 square feet. So if, in fact, the applicant could build a residence in the existing structure without changing anything but making improvements, even at that point, the building commission might not give a, a, a construction permit, and it would still have to come to this board for a special permit. At that point, this board would have to consider simply whether it is substantially more detrimental to the community, or what else would we have to consider?
Maybe the, the legal issue about whether you can put a residence or transform a structure from a garage into, convert it, I guess, you know, to, to a residential use without having the minimum area requirement. There's no minimum area requirement for a freestanding garage. That can stay where it is. But I think when you, when you make that transition and you want to make it a house or a residence, you know, I think you might have to, you need more land to do that. It's, it's a good law school question, too.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Attorney Kirk? All set? You all sat down here? You want to ask a question, or something?
No, I'd like to comment.
Oh, okay. Are you all, you're all set?
Yes, thank you very much.
Just need you to name an address, please.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Mark Harmson, and I, along with my sister, own the property at 4 Melrose Avenue, directly south of lot number eight. I feel like I'm in a scene from Groundhog Day, given the, the time and effort we've put into this. But I have a, a deep and treasured love for Falmouth Heights. Our family has owned our cottage, Snug Harbor, for 120 years. We have summered at Falmouth Heights for 140 years, since my great-grandparents started renting a room and a rooming house in the circle in the 1880s. So we have a tremendous love and respect for the town, the neighborhood, the character of the town, but I also have a respect for the rule of law. And I think the applicant here is using some incredible legal gymnastics to try and get around the rules that the town has set in their zoning. The town has set minimum lot size standards. This lot does not meet those lot size... This lot does not meet those lot size standards. The board determined that in their hearing and decision in December. They said the lot was too small. They also said the lot was, the applicant was building a home, which is a change of use. That seems pretty obvious to me, that a garage is not a home. It's being changed to a home. The board said and voted in December that they could not do that, and yet that is what they are trying to do now. The lot is too small, it's a change of use, and it is going to be a detriment to the other residents of Melrose Avenue. I live just directly south of the proposed applicant. My neighbors, who live at Number Three Melrose and Number Five Melrose, the three residents and abutters who are most impacted by this, are all here tonight and are all adamantly opposed to this application. And the reason why is not only that they're, seems like they're trying to get around the town zoning laws, but they're also going to build a residence that is going to have a detrimental impact on our livelihood and our enjoyment and our ability to enjoy our property, which is why I respect your questions, because I know from the, the home that was recently remodeled on Vernon Avenue that has a deck in the back of their home, which is exactly kitty-corner with our backyard, we can hear, every time they have a party, we can hear every single word from their deck in our kitchen, inside our home, because the way the sound echoes around there. So the fact that you are considering to build another home that could be used as a party house is something that would be a tremendous detriment to us who live on Melrose Avenue. Now, they say they're not going to rent it, maybe they will, maybe they won't, but they also said when they bought the property, they were just going to use it for parking. They had no intention of building a home, and yet here they are building a home. So what's to prevent them from running a bunch of college kids, whether there's one bedroom or two, and having 20 kids come in with a keg of beer? I'm old enough to remember the 1970s in Falmouth Heights, and it kind of made spring break in Florida look like a day in the park. And the last thing we want to do is to bring that back. Our neighborhood is so wonderful now. We've cleaned it up, it's a wonderful place for families, it's a great place to enjoy the summer. Why in the world would we want to cause a loophole that's going to be used by others in zoning laws in the future to say that, oh, I've got a 3,000-square-foot lot, I want to build a house? And that's one of the, the arguments that Mr. Clower made, that I really take exception to, is comparing apples and oranges. Sure, lots of homes in the Heights are on 3,000-square-foot lots or less, but they were built in the 1900s, or the 20s, or the 50s, or the 60s. They followed the zoning rules that are in effect at that time. And today, we live in 2025, and the zoning rules the town of Falmouth has say that the lot has to be 40,000 square feet, 7,500, whatever it is, a lot bigger than 3,000 square feet. And so it makes me wonder why we would want to create a loophole that other people might be able to use in the future to avoid the town zoning laws. The town wants to change the zoning laws, go ahead and change the zoning laws, let people build on 3,000-square-foot lots. But until you do that, you should enforce the laws that we have and not allow people to usurp the current laws that the town of Falmouth has. So I would urge the board to do as you did in December, to deny the application on the fact that the lot is too small, it's a substantial change of use, and it would be a severe detriment to the residents of Melrose Avenue, and you're opening yourself up to having another party house that's going to be something that's going to cause a great deal of loss of enjoyment for those of us who live on Melrose Avenue. The applicant does not live on Melrose, the applicant lives two blocks away, so they aren't going to be bothered by the noise. But would you want to be bothered by the noise? I wouldn't. And a car is not drinking beer at 2:00 in the morning, yelling and screaming. It's sitting there quietly in the garage. So I would encourage you to deny this application as you did in December and give the residents of Melrose Avenue, allow us to continue to enjoy the Heights as we have for so many years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Tony, do you want to come up?
Is there anybody else?
Do the rest of the public first?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do the public first, sorry. Anybody else from the public want to come up? Come on up. We just need your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Erin Kent. I live at Three Melrose Ave. The only thing I wanted to add, in terms of what makes it detrimental, that hasn't been addressed, and I'm actually surprised that it hasn't been given more thought, is that there already is a pretty significant drainage problem for the people, especially on Vernon Avenue, I think, especially at the, I don't know what street number it is, but it's Brian, it's Mr. Healy's house. I know that they, they're struggling with water that comes down into their home all the time, so I would like to see if, I mean, if you actually are thinking of going forward at this, I would want to see more scientific evidence that putting yet another residence with another septic system, with another overflow, how is, that, that's not going to help Mr. Healy. And I think having a chronic flooding problem is incredibly detrimental to someone's quality of life in their home. So.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Sorry, go for it. Thank you.
So are there any questions, or do you just want me to give some of my thoughts?
Yeah.
Thoughts, okay. Well, I hate to be the judge in between two lawyers that are doing a good job, but I would have to tend to agree with Mr. Clower's argument. I think there's two things going on here. I think the, the first part is, I think this is a nonconforming structure, despite complying with the setbacks in the lot coverage. Another thing you have to determine is, you know, the lot size. So obviously, you know, you've heard that the lot is too small for the zoning district, and since 2007, the SJC has determined that when a structure is on a lot that is too small, it's a nonconforming structure, and, you know, if you want to do something with it, you need to come to the board and get a finding, whether it's more detrimental to the neighborhood or not. So, so it's pretty clear to me that this is a nonconforming structure, and under 48 Section Six in the town zoning bylaw, you know, people are allowed to come here and request permits to alter or expand them. So I think, you know, they properly made this application. And then the, the second point is that it is a nonconforming use. I, I agree with Attorney Clower that, you know, you can't have a garage on its own on a residential lot. It's supposed to be accessory to something, but that's not the case here. And turning this garage into a residential structure is removing the nonconformity. So, because you're allowed to, of course, build houses, single-family houses in this district, so they're allowed to, they're allowed to seek a permit for, for the structure, and they don't need the permit to build the house for the, the purpose of the use. They're only, I think they only need the permit to be allowed to, you know, build the structure. I think by right, they can turn the garage into a house because they're making it more, they're making it conforming with the zoning district, and, you know, if this was a lot that conformed with the zoning and there was a garage on the property, they wouldn't need a Section Six finding to turn the garage use into the house use. But here, because the lot's too small, they need one to do the actual construction of the physical building, and now that they're removing the nonconforming use of the garage, I mean, I think, I, I think they're on solid legal ground on those two issues now. You know, part of the Section Six finding is that the board has to determine whether it's more detrimental or not. I don't really have an opinion on that, that's for, I think, the board to consider, based on the facts they presented and what you've heard from the, the abutters, but, so that's, you know, that's the standard that you apply, and you all discuss and see where you come out, but I think if you were to make a finding that it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood, I think, you know, you're on pretty solid ground if you were to choose to approve this permit.
So we're throwing use out the window?
Well, we're not throwing use out the window, the, the use is changing to a.
Conforming use.
To a what use?
Conforming use.
Conforming use, okay. Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
I think we're good.
Madam Chair, I've been out to this property a couple times. There's been a lot of discussion about flooding out here. And one of the things that I saw is that that house at the corner of Melrose and Grand Avenue to the south has got a paved-over backyard.
Yeah. The whole thing is.
The whole thing is paved over, and then there are drains coming out of the retaining wall, dumping all the water on the street.
They've actually plugged them since then, I think. I drove by the other day, I think they've actually plugged them, but the fact doesn't change it, there's probably 95% lot coverage there, and that never should have happened.
It never should have happened. That's just outrageous.
And also, he's adding more drainage than, and drywells than required, and I mean...
But he's adding septic and use, and people are going to live there.
Adding septic, but they have.
Two drains in front of it. Two drains in front of the house.
They are addressing the drainage issue, but it doesn't necessarily, it's created on this lot, it comes down the street.
It comes from somewhere else. And I mean.
We had a video of it at one of the hearings, remember? Somebody?
Well, that was a.
That's the house below, but it does flow through there.
But they showed us the town.
That was Number 10 when we had that.
10, 10 Melrose.
Yeah, Number 10.
The 10?
Yeah. And the town has since put in a couple of catch basins, but there's, there's no berm, and I believe he's agreed to incorporate a berm into it, along with the two extra catch bases in the front. I mean, he's reduced the size of this property. I think the gentleman has bent over backwards. I, honestly, I don't, if there's more to do, I bet you he'll do it, too. I just.
But that's a speculation. I don't, we either condition it, or we don't know what he's going to do.
Well, he's already put more drywells and drainage structures in there than are necessary.
I, I, I don't even know that.
They're in the prints.
I mean, I'm looking at the prints right now. May I do this?
Yeah, go for it.
I, I'm looking at this, it, it looks like it's pretty standard. I don't see anything that's overboard considering the slope of the land, the conditions that exist, so I'm not sure that I can go along with that statement that he may do even more. Should he do more? I, I don't know. This is all engineering, and, but if you think that, or anybody thinks that there should be more on this property, then we should condition it that way, the same way I'm hoping that you'll condition the, the deck.
The more, the, the two structures that the town put in, they don't function properly because there's a lack of a berm. You want to condition that he puts a berm in? Initially, he was against the berm, but he said last time he didn't.
But that, Madam Chair, that is a, as far as the berm is concerned, that's on town property. He can't just put a berm in.
He can put it on his own property. I mean, that's where the problem is. The, the, the catch basins don't work, they flow over the top of the catch basin, and they go on to his property. It would be in his own interest.
So I, I think I can address this, because our, our plan does show the paved apron with a berm to deflect stormwater, in addition to two 100-gallon drywells, which typically we do one 100-gallon drywall, and they're showing two 100-gallon drywells, but the note on the front of the, on the driveway apron does say paved apron with berm to deflect stormwater. And if you were to condition this per plan, that would be a condition of the decision.
Okay, thank you.
So, may I have a clarification on that? When you talk about two 100-gallon drywells, which is extremely small when it comes to water, and that's from my own experience, you're saying that would go on the applicant's property?
We show that at the southeast and northeast corner of the property.
They're on sand, too.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I, I thought you were talking about something new. I'm, I'm sorry.
No, on, on the plans, we do show the two drywells and berm.
And therefore capturing roof water.
Mm-hmm.
So they're designed for that. What Mr. Fitterman's talking about is the water that comes off the street and flows into the property. So I thought you were proposing that there would be an additional catch basin on the property.
Right. There's, there's two catch basins right in front of the property.
Yeah, I see that.
And then the berm on the driveway apron would prevent that from overflowing onto the lot as much as it has been.
So the abutters are concerned about flooding. We just heard Mr., we just heard Mr. Duffy talk about another property that is, has 95% coverage, it's paved, and may, I, I think that means it's probably contributing to the flooding in the back, I don't know that. So the real issue is, how do we overcome the concern that we can deal with, we can only deal with this one, how do we overcome the concern for the abutters should this be approved with regard to flooding? Because that, that's a major issue. So Mr. Fitterman is saying, well, we have them put a berm up to keep the water from flowing into the property. I don't know from an engineering perspective if that works.
Well, see the two catch basins there now?
Yes.
All right. They don't function because there's no berm here. The water flows right over the catch basin, onto this gentleman's property.
It goes too fast.
And it also, not only comes from that property that we're speaking of up here where the two seals are, that's 95% lot coverage, directly across the street, it runs down their driveway, and it runs.
So would you condition, would you ask, would you condition that there be some berm on his property, on the applicant's property?
We're proposing it.
You are proposing it?
It's shown right here, paved apron with berm to deflect stormwater.
He's added that since his original.
If you, Mr. Producer, even up on the screen right here, I have the mouse right, right on it right here.
I guess we've got to be a little careful, that we're going to put a berm up to deflect it.
Yeah.
We're not engineers, so.
Yeah, I just want to be careful. But engineering has reviewed this plan. This plan was reviewed by the engineering department.
If you go up there when it's raining, you can watch the way the, I've been there a dozen times.
So.
You can watch the way the, the water works.
In your opinion, if they do this.
Berm is going to do a tremendous amount, it's going to make the, the two catch basins that the town installed much more effective. The fact that he's putting in 200-gallon drywells when one would do, that means that nothing from his roof is ever going to have a, a net effect on the water problem, it's, it's going to be the opposite. I mean, I, it.
I guess if water goes down to the abutters, that they'll hire an attorney to come back, or the homeowner, and they can.
The clouds?
They can, they can fight it out again, right? That's, that's my.
The, the water is not generated on this lot.
No, not at all. And I mean, the, the, the berm ones, well, like I said, if you go up there during, when it's pouring, and I've been there numerous times, and that, that's going to be hugely effective. The town put the catch basins in there for that, but I mean, he's not generating any of this problem. You know, it's the fact that it's on a hill, and, and the guy up the street who got away with 95% lot coverage.
Lions.
I agree.
The lions.
Anybody have any further questions for any of us?
Are you guilty by association?
Attorney Kirk, do you want to come up and address something?
There's a man in the back that wants to speak.
That's the applicant.
Oh, you want to speak?
I just want to make a comment about that drawing.
Can he come out?
Sure, come on up. We just need your name and address, please.
There's Sullivan, in Melrose, hopefully. There are two drains, if you look at the wall halfway down the property on this drawing here.
Yes.
So not only is those 100 gallons taking the roof leaders, they're also taking those drains. So if any water should enter the property, before it goes down the wall and over to Number Nine, it's going to catch in those drains, the way it's graded. So not only do you have the two catch basins that were installed too high at the street, which I can fix easy enough, but you also have, I have two additional halfway down my property. I don't want the water, as much as you don't want the water coming down there, I don't want it either. So that will be rectified either way.
Okay, thank you. Did you mention what your background was? Also, mention what your background is?
Construction.
Thank you.
Not in Falmouth.
Yeah. Thank you.
Attorney Kirk wants to talk, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to ask, is it Mr. Riley? Yeah. Just, the chair asked Mr. Riley. He mentioned SJC's, a decision that dealt with nonconforming lots. If I'm not mistaken, those cases involved residential, existing residential structures on lots which, once upon a time, conformed to zoning, but there was a zoning, there was an increase in the minimum. But there was a zoning, there was an increase in the minimum area requirement so that the lot on which these existing residential structures were located became undersized but lawfully non-conforming. And the structure became non-conforming because of the lot size. But the two foundational points which are not present in this case, and correct me if I'm wrong, or maybe if I'm right, you can affirm that those cases involved residential structures on residential lots which were lawfully non-conforming. Go for it.
Yeah, I think that's true. That's what, that is what those cases said. But I think the principle still stands that if you have a structure on a lot that's too small, it's still a non-conforming structure. Otherwise, what else would it be? And, you know, if you have a commercial building on a lot that's too small, then you can never do anything with it, you know, or you couldn't convert it to a residential structure if you were in a zone that allowed residential structure. So I think the very high level blanket rule is that you don't only look to setbacks and lot coverage and the percentages, you have to look at the lot to see if the lot complies. And if the lot doesn't comply with zoning and there's a structure on it, it's a pre-existing non-conforming structure.
Simple.
Anybody else have anything further?
No.
Anybody else from the public before we close? Anybody have anything further? Attorney Claw, are you all set?
I don't have much to add. You know, there was some talk about lawfully non-conforming versus pre, versus non. I would say I would agree with Attorney Kirk's position about that if we were trying to convert this to an alternative non-conforming use. But what we're proposing is converting this to a conforming use. So that talks about pre-existing lawful non-conforming uses being changed by special permit. In this case, we're changing it to a conforming use. I would also state that, you know, we went through this in circles in December trying to date this garage and, you know, best estimates were early 1900s, which predate zoning. So this would be a legal lawful non-conforming use because Falmouth zoning didn't come into effect until 1927. So, those are my only points. Other than that, I think bootstrapping facts to put together to get across the goal line is going to be my new tagline. Because that's about the best job description I think anyone's ever done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Too big to put on a bumper sticker.
Figure out an acronym.
I'd make a motion to close.
Second?
Make a motion to close in a second. Everybody all set? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. All right.
I'll make a motion to approve with conditions.
Second that.
Motion to approve with conditions. Do findings?
Do findings?
Guess we shall.
We're dealing with Lot 8, Melrose Avenue in the Falmouth Heights section of town. I note that this hearing is on a voluntary remand from the land court. The previous decision of this board has been appealed to the land court, but the matter is still pending up there. But this matter is back on remand for us to reconsider the case. The owners of the property are Lawrence and Valerie Sullivan. The zoning district is RC. They've applied for special permit under Section 240 10.2A and 240 11.3A4 of the Falmouth zoning bylaw to raise and reconstruct the existing garage and build, and build a single-family dwelling exceeding lot coverage by structure of 20%. The board can find that the existing structure, which is a garage, is a lawful non-conforming structure in that it is an accessory structure, which the board treats as, a garage is an accessory structure, and there is no principal structure on the lot. The lot also is a non-conforming lot. There are no overlay districts involved. There are no flood zones involved. The existing garage is 497 square feet. The proposed one-bedroom, single-family dwelling will be 756 square feet. There's one previous decision, Decision 6224, which was a denial issued by this board, I think, in December of 2024. The lot is 3,711 square feet in a zoning district that today requires 40,000 square feet. The street frontage is 50 feet in a zoning district that today requires 100 feet of frontage. Melrose Avenue is a public right-of-way at this particular location. The lot coverage by structure existing is 13.39%. The proposal is to increase it to 30, excuse me, to 20.37%. The bylaw limits it to 20%. With a special permit, it can go to 25%. So they've asked for the special permit to exceed the lot coverage by structure. According to the worksheet submitted by the applicant, the average lot coverage by structure in this neighborhood is 30.51%. Lot coverage by structure parking and paving is currently 16.41%. It will be increased to 25.41%. The zoning bylaw allows up to 40%, so it will be conforming. The existing accessory structure conforms to zoning in terms of setbacks. The proposed single-family dwelling will also conform to zoning setbacks. So there are no non-conformities as to setbacks. The height of the existing structure is 16 feet, 4 inches. The increase will be to 23 feet, 11 inches. The zoning bylaw limits it to 35, so it complies with zoning. We have references from various town departments. The engineering department has suggested that there be a driveway permit is necessary and also to make sure that there's no storm, stormwater runoff and that we appropriately condition it for that purpose. Also, during construction, appropriate erosion and sediment control methods must be employed. Board of Health recites no issue, however, they say the septic system must be limited to 330 gallons per day. Conservation has no concerns or no comment. The water department says a new service will be required and the water meter must be in the building. The building department has sent us a referral, which Mr. Finneran led, saying that anything under 5,000 feet, he now requires that the board consider a special permit. And that's what we are doing. We've had, according to my count anyway, six letters in opposition to the project, one letter of concern, which wasn't necessarily opposition. We had three letters in support, then we had multiple people testifying, multiple people from the nest, from the neighborhood testifying at the hearing. The non-conformity, as I said, is the, it's an accessory structure, a garage, which is treated as an accessory structure under bylaw. There's no principal structure on the lot. Now, we are able to make a finding under Section 240 10.2A, which provides that pre-existing non-conforming structures may be extended, altered, or changed by special permits from the zoning board of appeals upon a finding that they shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure, and we so find. Also, the proposed structure will lessen the non-conformity in that it will be a conforming structure, will be a residence rather than a non-conforming garage. There are no new dimensional non-conformities. There does not, we have no testimony of impairment of views and vistas, and the proposed structure reasonably conforms to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. Under Section 240 11.3A4, which allows for 20, an excess of 20%, over 20% of lot coverage by structure, by structure, maximum is 25%. We note that the size and height of the structure is relative to the neighborhood average. We also have no particular evidence of a shadow on adjacent properties. And also, I will note, and we can find that the proposed structure is only nine feet higher than the existing structure, and we typically do not require a shadow study unless there's multiple stories involved. Again, there's no, no finding that views and vistas are impaired from public ways, and we have no comment from the Board of Health suggesting that there's a nitrogen impact on coastal abeyments. As far as a special permit is concerned, we find that the site is adequate for the proposed use and suitable for the proposed use. And we have evidence that there are at least 25 properties in the neighborhood on similar-sized lots. There's no impact on traffic flow and safety. There's no impact on neighborhood visual character views and vistas. There's adequate sewage disposal, adequate utilities, and no negative impact on affordable housing in the town.
Good job. The lot. Do you want to do conditions now?
Take the conditions from the...
Vote first or conditions?
We do, I think we take conditions and then vote.
Let's do conditions.
So they've mentioned that there'd be no rentals for less than six months.
Six months, right?
And also the enclosure of the second floor deck that Mr. Petrucci has talked about, he can probably be more specific than me.
Second floor deck, shall be enclosed with solid wall with the exterior matching, the exterior of the house to a height of not less than railing height.
Do we want to condition the fact that there are two entrances that someone brought up? There's a bathroom on the first floor, bathroom on the second floor?
I hate to confuse this, but how about if he has privacy fenced, where nobody can see in, but he can see out? Oh, no, that's going to kill him. Dull. Just, it's too far for me.
We could apply to amend if need be.
Pardon me?
We could apply to amend if need be.
Do we have to address the bedroom in the cellar? There can be a bedroom in the cellar.
There should be.
Or do we address the fact that there are two entrances? Do we need any conditions?
I don't think there's anything in this bylaw that says there can't be two entrances.
For cheating purposes, I'm talking.
But we can't assume there's going to be cheating.
I think per plan, Madam Chair. Per plan.
Per plan, whatever's that.
Okay. And we'll just assume that they're never going to use that storage as a bedroom, even though it's perfectly set up?
Well, there's been no evidence of it, and you can't assume people are going to be cheating.
I mean, it's a rental property here we're talking, so.
Well...
But can we stop them?
The building commissioner's in charge of enforcement. If he finds people in there that don't belong there, he can chase them out.
All right, so let's get back to regular conditions.
Per plan.
Per plan, all boards, any department requirements, they'll need police.
Potentially, yes, small road.
Yeah, small road.
Construction vehicles must be on site.
Yep. Dark sky, compliant lighting. Working hours, the regular working hours. Guess we don't care about that. Okay, any other conditions anyone can think of?
No.
Okay, all those in favor, right? You guys all ready to vote?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Me. Forward.
Thank you very much. We appreciate all the time and effort that's gone into this and you gearing us out, and appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you all for being patient with our little delay this morning, I mean, this evening, too. All right, moving along, we're up to, we'll do Winslow Road, Clements. And I figure we can just take out the decision that she drafted for us and let it through, if that's okay with everybody? Frank can do the...
You're going to make a motion to approve or with conditions?
Well, first we have to...
I'll read the findings and then close first.
First we have to close, right?
And I'll do the findings from her proposed decision.
Well, I would like to, like, open up and just make sure the public first.
Go ahead and do that.
You know what I mean? Just to make sure. I don't want to get snagged on that, so. All right, so first we're doing 85 Winslow Road, Clements?
Yes.
That's you.
Hi, Doug Clements, 85 Winslow Road.
Do you have anything further before we close the hearing?
The only thing I'm going to add is that per Mr. Finneran's suggestion, I made an application with the select board office for a grant of license for the public right-of-way obstruction.
Good.
And that is in the works impending. So thank you for the suggestion.
Good.
They give them out like candy.
You're okay with this case? No comment?
He's the next one.
You're coming. You guys all set with the applicant? Everybody's all set?
Motion to close.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Frank.
Motion to approve with conditions.
Motion to approve again. Second that.
There you go, motion to approve.
We're moving right along now.
There you go, we're moving. All right, let's do findings.
Okay, we have, property is 85 Winslow Road in North Falmouth. The owner is Douglas C. Clements.
I don't even think you have to read them all, do you?
No, I'm not going to read them all. I just kind of, I got some...
Does anybody have any?
Some pipeline.
Oh, you have some, okay, perfect.
The property's in a, RB zoning district. Mr. Clements has applied for a special permit under Section 240 10.2A and 240 6.6B plus 240 11.3A4 of the Falmouth zoning bylaw to raise and reconstruct the detached garage exceeding lot coverage by structure of 20%. Property is in an RB zoning district, and it is in the Fiddler's Cove Coastal Pond Overlay District. Premises contain 16,151 square feet of area in a single-family, in an RB zoning district, the minimum lot size is now 40,000 square feet. The premises has 110 feet of frontage on Winslow Road. The zoning bylaw now requires 100 feet, so it conforms. Premises is located in the Fiddler's Cove Coastal Pond Overlay District. There's a private septic system, no private zoning, rules decisions on the premises. Premises is currently improved by a single-family dwelling, which will not, is not the subject of this application, the detached, and a detached garage, which is the subject of this application. The house on the lot conforms to zoning, so there's no non-conformity there. The detached garage is 433 square feet, and it is non-conforming in that it sits 5.5 feet on the easterly sideline where 10 feet is required. The replacement garage will be 28 feet by 36 feet and be 1,008 square feet, so it'll be more than double in size. And the replacement garage will be sited 5.8 feet from the sideline on east, so it's a slight improvement over the existing non-conforming dimensions. The new garage will be 21 feet in height and is below the 22-foot height of the zoning bylaw, which limits accessory structures to 22 feet in height. The proposed garage will not have any water service. A dry well is proposed to manage any new stormwater runoff from the garage. The existing lot coverage by structure is 18.1%. This is on the whole lot now. It will increase to 21.7%. The maximum is 20%, and they may go to 25% by special permit. So we're going to vote on that. Lot coverage by structure parking and paving is currently 27.7%. It will increase to 31.2%. 40% is allowed by the zoning bylaw, so it conforms. Engineering notes that the project must not direct stormwater runoff onto any abutting properties. It notes the existing gravel driveway encroaches into, into the...
Abutting property.
Encroach onto abutting property. But the driveway is proposed to be repaved and is going to be handled by the applicant. The retaining wall and a portion of the parking space is within the town's road layout, and the applicant is going to apply to the Board of Selectmen for a license to maintain the same. There was no opposition letters noted in the file, and there was nobody appearing at the public hearing.
That's it, all right?
So, we're going to go on to then...
Conditions?
No, we're going to go further. On Section 240 10.2A, non-conforming structures shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure based upon the factors in Section 240 12.1E, which is a special permit, which I will get to later. But the reconstruction may be allowed as maintaining or lessening any non-conformity. In this particular case, the non-conformity will be lessened if the property is being moved further away from the easterly lot line. So there are no new non-conformities. There's no... nonconformities. There's no evidence that any views or vistas will be impaired, and the proposed garage reasonably conforms to neighborhood average dimensions. In far, under Section 240-6.6B, under use tables in an RB district, and this is in an RB district, a special permit is necessary for a garage of more than 900 square feet. The applicant has applied for a garage of 1,008 square feet, so he needs a special permit under Section 240-6.6B. Under Section 240-11.3A4, any increase in lot coverage by structure up to 20, up to a maximum of 25%, over 20%, up to 25%, rather, needs a special permit. The findings are that the size and height of the proposed structure relate to neighborhood averages. As to size and height, there's no evidence of affecting shadows on abutting property, there's no evidence of impairment of views and vistas, and there's no evidence of impairment of coastal abeyments. In fact, the new garage will not have any water service. As far as the special permit goes, under Section 240-12.1E, a special permit may be granted upon a determination that the proposed use will not have adverse effects, that overbalance beneficial effects in the, in the neighborhood, considering we find that the site is adequate for the proposed use, the site is suitable for the proposed use, there is no impact, negative impact on traffic flow and safety, there is adequate sewer disposal, there is adequate utilities, and there's no negative impact on affordable housing in the town of Balmouth.
Conditions. What are you doing?
Yep.
Per plans, per plot, plot plan, per garage plan, applicant shall comply with all departments, engineering, the soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions. Applicant shall either remove the encroachments within the town right-of-way, which he stated he's tried, or receive a license. Applicant shall ensure that no driveway or paving exceeds the lot line. Due to the lot coverage by structures exceeding the as-of-right limit per bylaw, there should be no further structures installed, including a shed, absent prior to the approval of the zoning board. The applicant shall submit a foundation plan for the garage to the building department prior to the issuance of a final sign-off. The height limit is, is to 21 feet. Construction vehicles and materials will be located within the lot, not on the street. Construction hours, 7:00 AM, 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM through 4:00 on Saturdays, no construction on Sundays or holidays, town observed holidays. This permit shall not take effect until a copy of the decision bearing the certification of the town clerk that 20 days has lapsed. Any deviation, no matter how minor, from the approval issued from this board, shall be submitted to the board for approval. Special permit shall lapse within three years. Everybody all set on those? Everybody all set? Then we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Great. You're all set.
Enjoy your workshop.
Thanks for your time.
You want my copy of your plan? Do you want another one to hang around the house or something?
It's good to keep one in the truck, anyway. You never know.
Well, they got to recycle it.
All right, let's move along.
Dooley.
Next, we have Dooley, 28 Boston. That's you, Attorney Cloud. Do you have anything before we close?
I do not. No changes since our last hearing. I don't think there was any homework for us from the board. Board seemed generally satisfied with the proposed plan. Happy to address any questions. Otherwise, ready to move on.
Motion to close, then.
That's good job.
Second.
Everyone's all set to close? Anybody from the public want to comment? We're all set to close? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? All right, Frank, take it away.
How about a motion to approve?
Oh, motion to approve with conditions.
I'll second that.
Well, you don't do that yet.
I second it.
Findings.
Alright, findings. So the property is located at 28 Boston Street in East Balmouth, Massachusetts. The owner is James R. and Kathy M. Dooley.
What are you doing?
Nope. They've applied for a special permit under Section 240-10.2A to raise and reconstruct the existing nonconforming single-family dwelling and replace it there in an RC zoning district. The property, again, is in an RC zoning district. The minimum lot size is 40,000 square feet. This particular property is 4,800 square feet of area in a single-family residence, RC zoning district. The premises has 60 feet of street frontage, and 100 feet is required under the current zoning bylaw. Premises is located in the Little Pond Coastal Pond Overlay District. It's also in a high wind, high windborne debris district, and a search and revi- search and rescue overlay district. It's also in a town nitrogen-sensitive area and an AE-12 flood zone. The premises is on the town sewer. There was no, there's no previous zoning Board of Appeals decision for this property. The premises is sited 10.7 feet from Boston Street in a zoning district, which currently requires a 25-foot setback from the street, so it is a nonconforming structure. The dwelling is also sited 7 feet from the easterly sideline, so it's nonconforming in that respect. The reconstructed dwelling is proposed to be 14.5 feet from Boston Street, which is an improvement over the current 10.7 feet, and the sideline setback will be increased to 11 feet, thus eliminating that nonconformity. The setback requirement is 10 feet for sideline. The replacement dwelling is proposed to be two and a half stories. The height will be 33 feet 8 inches in height, so it will be within the 35-foot height limit of the zoning bylaw. The water department notes that the service is currently a 3/4 inch and recommends that it upgraded to a 1-inch service with the meter to be located inside the building and not in a crawl space. The existing lot coverage by structure is 26.4%, which is above the minimum of the zoning bylaw, will be slightly decreased to 26.1%, which remains above the zoning bylaw, so we're going to have a special permit vote to take care of that issue. The lot coverage by structure is nonconforming and will remain so. The, according to a worksheet submitted by the applicant, the average lot coverage by structure in this neighborhood is 22.4%, which is above the 20% minimum of the zoning bylaw. The existing lot coverage by structure parking and paving is 32%, it will be increased to 39.9%, which brings it very close to the 40% limit of the zoning bylaw, but it does not exceed the zoning bylaw. Engineering requests that there be an application for a driveway permit, and also that there be adequate erosion and, sediment and erosion controls in place during construction. Conservation Commission has issued a negative request for determination of applicability. There were two letters of support submitted in behalf of this application. There were no letters of opposition noted in the file, and I don't believe there's any testimony from the neighborhood at the hearing. I got it. Someplace.
Almost the same speech.
I know. Almost the same speech.
So many variations.
I had so many of them, I tried to make some, make some notes, and where's Cypress? That's in the back. Well, I can...
You can probably read off the other one.
Yeah, I'm trying to. Oh, Cypress is the back, okay. Under, under Section 240-10.2A, the zoning bylaw, pre-existing nonconforming structure may be extended, altered, or changed by special permit and ZBA, shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure, provided it maintains or lessens nonconformities. There's no new dimensional conformities that we have noted, and actually, they're improved. The struc- the new structure does not impair views and vistas, and it reasonably conforms to average dimensions in the neighborhood. Under Section 240-10.1, for the special permit, we note that the site is adequate for the proposed use, the site is suitable for the proposed use, there's no negative impact on traffic flow and safety, there's adequate sewer disposal, as the property is on the municipal sewer, adequate utilities, and there's no negative impact on affordable housing in the community.
Can I bring our conditions through?
Yeah.
All right, conditions. Plans per plan, per as-built floor plan. Applicant shall comply with all town boards, no storm, stormor runoff, stormwater runoff, talk much. The applicant shall post the address in compliance with 99-1, affixed in the legible numbers. That he must, they, they must follow soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions. The applicant shall apply or gain approved driveway permit from engineering, post any required bond, and timely complete work as permitted with stormwater mitigation. The applicant shall apply for any connections or alter, alterations to public utilities with the appropriate department. The applicant shall post the address. Engineering sign-off is required for the issuance of a building permit. The applicant shall upgrade the water service and locate the meter inside the dwelling, not in a crawl space. The meter pit shall be removed. The applicant shall comply with applicable wastewater department requirements regarding the sewer system. The dwelling is limited to four bedrooms to include the office, it is, in parentheses, to include the office as it qualifies as a Title V bedroom, under parentheses. No non-bedroom space, including the second floor loft and third floor bonus room, shall be converted to a bedroom. Five, there shall be no further structure placed on the lot, including a shed, given the lot coverage by structures exceeding the maximum amount limit. Any further change to the structure shall require approval by the zoning board. The applicant shall provide the building department and the zoning Board of Appeals a certified stamp, stamped by the surveyor attesting to the lot coverage by structure, and by structure paving, parking paving does not exceed the limit of the special permit. The applicant shall provide the building department with an elevation certif- certification stamped by a surveyor. All construction vehicles and materials will be located within the lot and not on the street. The applicant shall contact the police department if a detail is necessary. The cost for this detail is on the applicant. Nine, the applicant shall comply with all requirements of the Conservation Commission. Construction hours, 7 through 7, Monday through Friday, 8 to 4 on Saturdays, no construction on Sunday or town observed holidays. This permit will not take effect for 20 days for, for an appeal. Any deviation, no matter how minor, from this approval issued by this board shall be submitted to the board for approval prior, prior to implementation of said change. On this zoning, this permit shall lapse three years from now. So we're all set to vote? Everybody all set? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. And next, we have 33 Martin. I thought you had left. I was worried. Glad you stayed. All right.
No comment.
No comment.
My car's right there. I just...
All right.
Cold. My body's adjusted to the heat. I work outside.
Oh, you, yeah. All right, so. Let's go, Mark. Do you have anything further to say to us?
Uh, you probably remember what I said. I'm just, I'm...
No, we remember. Just, we're going to close, and once we close...
Nothing additional?
Yeah.
Nothing, no.
Well, everyone's been really nice. Kongkong was really nice. You know, you probably don't know, I violated Kongkong. I had to plant $5,000 worth of plants. I, there's even more to go. She let me to do that, and then there's going to be more plantings.
That's not our business, Carl.
I know. I'm going to have the most mitigated property in Quay when I'm done.
God.
My 25-foot setback was done for you guys. That's why I asked Engineering to put that on there. Thought it would make the ZBA happy, and it just happens to be where I want it, so.
Happens to be the rule.
Yeah.
Motion to close? Second.
A motion to close in a second? Everybody's all set?
No.
Go ahead. What would you like?
I want to have a clarification with regard to what the applicant is applying for. And I, as I understand, the applicant is applying for variance. Am I correct?
He's applying for a special permit for the building and a variance to allow there to be two dwellings on the lot during the construction period.
As a, as a, have the conditions of a variance been met?
That won't happen until construction's...
I think the only, the glitch is a variance is forever, and this isn't going to...
Temporary.
So if this is approved, it would be a temporary variance?
Yes.
It would be a temporary variance, yes.
But even a temporary variance requires that it meet the conditions of a variance.
Yes.
Are there any issues with that on this board right now?
Well, he's got a very strange topography, and he's got a very steep slope on this lot, so it's different from every other lot in that particular neighborhood. I also have been thinking about the same question, and I'm not sure that this gentleman needs a variance, but because I think he can get it another way, I'm willing to vote for one, but let me just explain. The bylaw says that there shall be one dwelling per lot.
That's right.
Okay? Now, but the definition of a dwelling is a structure used for residential occupancy.
You got to get a permit.
So he's only going to be using one structure for residential occupancy, and he can't get a permit to occupy the second one until he's made arrangements with the building commission to take the first one down. So I think the building commissioner probably could have handled this administratively, but because he can handle it administratively, if they feel more comfortable with us granting him a temporary variance, I'm willing to do it, but I'm not positive that it's necessary.
And I agree with you.
Yeah.
Absolutely agree with you. I just want to get that on the record, because I think he should go forward with this project and then condition it to that effect that, how that temporary variance expires. Mike, I want to say one more thing, to go on the record. I see that this, doing it this way can create litigation and problems for the town, and I just want to put this out there. If, in fact, the applicant did not comply with this, then the town must litigate it. And then the town, in the conditions we make, we would put on this would even give us, I think, what they would give us is the ability to enforce compliance via demolition, but I'm not sure the town has the right to demolish the existing house. Am I correct on that?
Don't they have the right?
The process is they, they instruct the applicant to demolish the, the illegal structure, and if after a passage of time, the applicant or the owner of the property does not comply with that order, the building department, yes, may go on the property and, and demolish the property. And they can also, beyond that, they can lien the property for the cost of demolition, which we have done before.
Is that what you're concerned with? And not give an occupancy permit.
In the conditions on number nine, do you want me to read it?
I just want to make sure, so. That was a concern of mine. I think that's clarified now. I wanted it on the record. Could you read that, Matt Chair?
Number nine, it says there should be no final, well, number eight, there should be no final certificate of occupancy for the new dwelling until the old dwelling is demolished. The old dwelling shall be demolished within three months of the issuance of a temporary certificate of occupancy for the new dwelling. Number nine, the variance is granted temporarily for the convenience of the applicant. Should the applicant fail to timely demolish the old structure, the town shall have the authority to enforce compliance. The applicant shall be responsible for any legal costs associated with the town's enforcement of the removal of the old dwelling.
That's, well, that's the statute, that they have the right to do that.
Right, so that's, I think, what you're comfortable with.
Thank you.
It won't take three months.
Okay.
Do we have to vote on two different?
No, we've voted as, as the app- you've made a motion to approve as, according to the application, right?
Do we have to do one? Do we have to do one, a separate one for special permit and a separate one for?
No, 'cause it's, we're gonna handle it.
We're just gonna do it once, okay.
Well, we haven't even voted.
It just wasn't shared. All right, so.
We gotta vote on the close first.
We're gonna do findings?
No, we're gonna close.
Oh, we already, we did close?
He voted.
Oh, you did not close, that's right. Are you all set?
We haven't voted yet. We motioned, and then he had a question.
Probably just wants to go home, not.
Yeah.
So we voted to close?
He's the next.
No, we're about to. You made the motion to close?
Yeah.
You seconded?
I will second it again, yeah.
Sir, are you all set out there?
He's the next application.
The next.
Okay, so we're all set to close, right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. All right, Frank, now we can do findings.
No, we have a motion to approve as.
Motion to approve the conditions.
Second that.
She's letting me off every time.
I keep forgetting you.
Okay. All right. So we have property at 33 Martin Road in Wacoit. Lars Bergren is the owner of the property and the applicant for the special permit and the variance. The zoning district is AGA, which stands for Agricultural A District. They've applied for a special permit under section 240, 10.2A of the zoning bylaw and the variance under section 12.3A to raise and reconstruct the existing non-conforming single-family dwelling and allow the existing single-family dwelling to remain until a proposed single-family dwelling is completed. The property is in a historic district. It's also in the Wacoit Bay Coastal Pond Overlay District.
I saw you Michael with me.
The minimum, the lot is 39,123 square feet in area, and the minimum lot size in the district is now 40,000 square feet. So the premises is close to zoning, but nevertheless non-conforming. The premises has 227.4 feet of frontage on Martin Road. The minimum street frontage in this district is 100 feet. So the frontage is conforming. The premises is located within the overlay districts, which I just noted. It is also located in a flood zone X. And it is bounded in part by the Quashnet River. It's also in an A-10 flood zone for the southerly portion of the lot. There are no previous zoning board of appeals decisions on this property. The existing dwelling is sited 8.4 feet from Martin Road in a district where the minimum setback from the street is 25 feet. So that's the existing structure is non-conforming as to street setback. The remaining dimensions of the building are conforming to the zoning bylaw. The reconstructed dwelling is proposed to be sited 21.9 feet from Martin Road. It remains non-conforming because the setback remains at 25 feet, but it will be substantially improved from the existing non-conforming situation. The property is on a private septic system. The Board of Health notes that a reserve area is shown on the plan for a possible IA septic system should be required, as this is a nitrogen-sensitive area. The existing dwelling comprises a single story. The replacement dwelling will be 25 feet in height and is within the 35-foot height limit of the bylaw. Water Department recommends a survey to determine the materials and size of the water line. If the line does not meet standards, it will be required to be upgraded to a one-inch service. I presume that's gonna be handled by the applicant. Lot coverage by structure is currently 7%. It will be increased to 10.8%. Lot coverage by structure up 20% is allowed by the bylaw. Lot coverage by structure, parking, and paving is currently 7.4%. Will be increased to 12.4%. And it will remain below the 40% limit of the zoning bylaw. The Planning Board has endorsed an A&R Plan. That stands for Approval Not Required. Plan to merge the two existing lots that comprise the premises. The Building Commissioner, by the way, has issued a requirement that the A&R Plan be recorded in the Registry of Deeds prior to the issuance of a building permit. The Historical Commission has issued a demolition delay waiver for the, for the existing single-family dwelling. Engineering requests that no stormwater leave the, leave the site and that the applicant apply for a driveway permit. Conservation Commission has issued an order of condition for the property on September 24th, 2024, as the property is bounded in part by the Quashnet River. There was neither any support nor opposition submitted and expressed, expressed at the hearing, and there were no letters in file. The application is unique in that the applicant requests a temporary variance to allow him to reside in the existing dwelling while the replacement dwelling is under construction. Section 240, 11.2A2 of the Falmouth zoning bylaw says that there shall be one dwelling per lot. And for a period of time while a second building is being constructed, there will be arguably two dwellings, although one, only one will be occupied and used as a dwelling. There are some unique circumstances to the topography of the lot. There's a slope of some 30 feet in elevation down to the Quashnet River. Therefore, the board is able to make a finding that owing to circumstances relating to topography of land or structures specifically, specifically affecting the land, but not generally affecting the zoning district in which the land is located, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the zoning bylaw would involve substantial financial hardship to the applicant. And desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw. With respect to the application for a special permit under section 12.2A.
I mean, 240, 10.2A?
240, 10.2A. We note that the site is adequate. We note that there will be, the proposed structure will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. And then under section 12.240, 12.1E of the Code of Falmouth, the zoning bylaw, which provides for a special permit, we can make a finding that the site is adequate for the proposed use. The site is suitable for the proposed use. There will be no negative impact on traffic flows and safety. There is adequate septic system. There's adequate utilities, and there's no effect on affordable housing.
Nice. Are we due to conditions?
Yes, please.
Plans per plan, site and septic plan. We have a copy of that, existing floor plan to be followed, proposed floor plan. The applicant shall comply with all requirements of the Engineering Department and all other boards. There shall be no stormwater runoff from the premises, and construction activities shall not cause erosion or sedimentation to abutting properties. The applicant shall post the address in compliance with the town's regs. Construction should not adversely affect the town drainage system or right-of-way. The applicant shall comply with the requirements found in the town's soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions. The applicant shall apply for an approved driveway permit from engineering, post any required bond, and timely complete the work as permitted. The applicant shall apply for any connections or alternations, alterations to public utilities within the appropriate department. Engineering sign-off is required for the issuance of a building permit. The applicant shall survey the water service and upgrade the service if required by the Water Department. The applicant shall locate the meter inside the dwelling and not in a crawl space. If there is a meter pit, it should be removed. The applicant shall comply with the applicable Board of Health requirements regarding the septic system. Do you think we need to have a reserve area for an IA in the conditions?
I think, I think, did you put an N?
I don't know.
Isn't that in the Board of Health referral?
It's been pretty standard.
Is it in the Board of Health? I'll do, let's word it this way. The applicant shall comply with the applicable Board of Health requirements regarding the septic system and, if required, reserve area for an IA.
Okay.
Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
All right. The applicant shall comply with any requirements of the Conservation Commission, including soil erosion and sediment controls. Sorry about that. The applicant shall file an, shall file the A&R Plan that was endorsed by the Planning Board with the Registry of Deeds prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number seven, all construction materials, vehicles and materials will be located within the lot and not on the street. The applicant shall contact the Police Department if a detail is necessary. The cost for any detail will be at the applicant's expense. Martin Road shall be kept clean of any construction-related material at the premises for the duration. Eight, there should be no final certificate of occupancy for the new dwelling until the old dwelling is demolished. The old dwelling shall be demolished within three months of the issuance of a temporary COA. Substantial completion shall be for the new dwelling. Nine, the variance is granted temporarily for the convenience of the applicant. Should the applicant fail to timely demolish the old structure, the town shall have the authority to enforce compliance. The applicant will be responsible for any legal costs associated with the town's enforcement of the removal of the old dwelling. Ten, the variance shall terminate upon the removal of the old dwelling unit, wherein the premises, premises will then be in compliance with the zoning bylaw. Eleven, construction hours is seven to seven, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to four on Saturdays. No construction on Sunday or town holidays. Twelve, this permit shall not take effect until the 20-day appeal period is lapsed. Any deviation, no matter how minor, from this approval issued by this board shall be submitted to the board for approval prior to implementation of said change. And one more. The special permit shall lapse three years from the date from this decision.
And the plan did, Madam Chair, did show a reserve area of 10 feet.
It does show it on the plan?
Yes, it does, yeah.
Well, at least we covered that.
Yep, okay.
Okay. So I think we're all set. Everybody ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Great, you're all set.
Fabulous.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your help.
Thank you. Good luck. Yeah. Great, thank you. I'm glad they are.
Good luck.
Good luck. All right, we're moving on to 65 Cypress. Do you have anything to add for us?
I really have nothing new to add from our meeting last time.
Well, then, I'll motion to close.
I'll second.
No, you go first.
Did you get that?
Second.
Shut the buck up.
It's a Tony.
Tony did his first variance tonight.
He's good.
Yeah.
Not great.
Very proud of you.
Oh. Big night. All right, so all those in favor for closing? Aye. Opposed? None.
Motion to approve with conditions.
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
I'll second it.
Okay, the premises is 65 Cypress Street. In Falmouth, the owners are Scott and Holden Lutz. They've applied for special permit under section 240, 10.2A to raise and reconstruct the existing single-family non-conforming dwelling. Property's in an RC zoning district. It's in the Great Pond Coastal Pond Overlay District. It's also in the search and rescue overlay district. Cypress Street is a public right-of-way. The lot is 4,800 square feet in a zoning district, which currently requires 40,000 square feet. The premises has 60 feet of frontage on Cypress Street in a zoning district where the current minimum is 100 feet. The premises is on the town sewer. There's no previous zoning board of appeals decision on the premises. The dwelling, the existing dwelling is sited 8.3 feet from the westerly sideline, which is a non-conforming dimension. So the dwelling is non-conforming. The, there's a shed on the property which is proposed to be removed and not replaced. The reconstructed dwelling is proposed to be sited 10 feet from Cypress Street, which, which will remain non-conforming, but will be slightly improved. The dwelling will be sited 10.3 feet from the westerly sideline, eliminating that non-conformity. As noted, the property is on the town sewer, so up to four bedrooms may be allowed under the sewer bylaw. The existing dwelling consists, is a single story, is 12 feet in height. The proposed dwelling will be two stories and 27 point, 27 feet, 10 and 5 sixteenths of an inch in height, remaining within the 35-foot limit of the zoning bylaw. The Water Department notes that the current water service is a 3/4 inch and recommends upgrading to a 1-inch service and that the pit be removed and the meter be located in the dwelling. The existing lot coverage by structure is 25.71%, and will be slightly decreased to 24.76%. The bylaw allows 20 with up to 25% by special permit, so the special permit is necessary. The lot coverage is non-conforming. The lot coverage by structure, parking, and paving is 32.2%. Will be increased to 39.76%, just barely below the 40% limit of the zoning bylaw. Engineering requests that no stormwater leave the property during, and that the applicant apply for a driveway permit. Also, that erosion and sediment controls be applied during construction. Conservation Commission issued no comment. There were no letters of support or letters in opposition submitted, and no opposition was expressed at the hearing regarding the proposal. The average lot coverage by structure in the neighborhood, we have determined, is 23.7%. Also, the Building Commissioner noted that because the lot coverage by struct, wants a certification of lot coverage by structure.
It's in the conditions.
It's in the conditions, okay.
Then she did the 240 right here.
So the, under section 240, 10.2A of the zoning bylaw, pre-existing non-conforming structures may be extended, altered, or changed by special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals, provided they shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure, and we so determine. There'll be lessening non-conformities. There's no new dimensional non-conformities created. The new structure does not impair, or there's no evidence that they impair views and vistas. And the new structure reasonably conforms to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. With respect to the special permit under section 240, 12.1E, we determine that the site is adequate for the proposed use, that the site is suitable for the proposed use. There's no negative impact on traffic flows and safety. There's no negative impact on neighborhood views, characters of views and vistas. There's adequate sewer disposal, as evidenced by the fact that the property is connected to the municipal sewer. There are adequate utilities, and there's no negative impact on the affordable housing supply in the town of Falmouth.
Nice. Conditions? All plans, there's a plot plan and front and back elevations. All, all plans shall be followed. The applicant shall comply with all requirements of the Engineering Department. There shall be no stormwater runoff from the premises. Construction shall include installation of the required construction entrance and erosion controls. Drywalls to be installed. The applicant shall post the address in compliance with section 99-1. Construction shall not adversely affect the town's drainage system or right-of-way. The applicant shall comply with the town's soil erosion and sediment control standards. The applicant shall apply for an approved driveway permit from engineering, post any required bond, and timely complete the work as permitted with stormwater mitigation. The applicant shall apply for connections or alterations to public utilities with the appropriate department. Engineering sign-off is required for the issuance of a building permit. The applicant shall upgrade the water service and locate the meter inside the dwelling and not in a crawl space. The meter pit shall be removed. The applicant shall comply with the applicable wastewater department requirements regarding the sewer system. The dwelling is limited to four bedrooms. No non-bed, no non-bedroom space shall be converted to a bedroom. Five, the existing shed shall be removed and not replaced. There shall be no further structure placed on the lot, including a shed, given the lot cover by structure approaching the maximum amount. The, any further change to the structure on the lot shall require a further approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Six, the applicant shall provide the Building Department and Zoning Board a certified plan stamped by the surveyor attesting to the lot cover by structure and by the structure paving, parking, so it does not exceed the limit of the special permit. All construction vehicles and materials will be located within the lot, not on the street. The applicant shall contact the Police Department if a detail is necessary. The cost for any detail will be at the applicant's expense. The applicant shall require with all, shall comply with all requirements of the wastewater division regarding the cut and. division regarding the cut and cap of the existing sewer connection and the submission of a plan for sewer connection modification permit. Construction hours seven to seven Monday through Friday, eight to four on Saturdays, no construction on Sunday or town observed holidays. This permit will not take effect until a copy of the decision after the town clerk has twenty-day appeal period has lapsed. Any deviation, no matter how minor, from the approval of this, the approval issued by this board shall be submitted to the board. Wait a minute. Any deviation, no matter how minor, from the approval issued by this board shall be submitted to the board for approval prior to implementation of said change, and this shall lapse three years from the date of this approval. All right, everybody's all set?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? None. You're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry to make you wait all night. Worth waiting for, though.
Yes.
All right, let's move on to our, everybody look at the minutes.
Get out of here fast.
You've been waiting more than just tonight.
Can we do the minutes real quick?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve June, are you all set with approving the minutes?
Yeah, we can do all three of them.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve June six, June twelve, June twenty-six, all to twenty twenty-five.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board discussion?
Oh, I guess they built it, and they're gonna dig it up and put it where it should be. I think we're okay with it, right?
Board updates? I had one tonight. He's having a baby down there.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Not me.
Not Tony. Congratulations, I didn't know.
Yeah.
Future agenda items? Our next meeting will be on July twenty-fourth at six PM. Mark?
What are we doing? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor returning? Aye.